Hey, my friends. It is a little brisk out tonight.
How you doing, Tony? She's coming on. Better. Appreciate everybody's prayers. So good for y'all. Dr. Moore with Daniel.
Yes, sir.
It's not for you to know.
What is it for? For me to just accept?
For you to speculate. Give them all the... The mic.
I don't think Tony know nothing about Halldale.
No, just went to church there.
We grew up there.
Yes, you were a pastor.
And proud of you too.
Yeah, you were pastor cousin too.
Every now and then we used to have to get them guys, we used to have to get those guys from addicts.
Well, you really do do a bit for not playing basketball. Twelve minutes off tonight. My little notes here.
Mr. President, put a timer on that PT EF lady when she gets up there. Make sure she doesn't run over. Who is that? For the good of the cause.
I pulled out my car. Hey, we're gonna...
Tony, you ain't getting it. Tony, you ain't getting it.
I was bored all night, not last night.
Check out Tony. Check out Tony. God, Lee. He is.
Mr. President, whenever you're ready.
Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to our Pike Township School Board meeting, February 27th. Before we begin with our agenda items, we have a point of order. I'd like to attain a motion to table action item B, administrators and classified staff pay increase for discussion and to be reintroduced the very next school board meeting. So move, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our agenda items. First, we have for the good of the cause. If any patrons would like to use this platform to say anything for the good of the cause, you may do so now. Before we start, I highly recommend if you're going to speak for the good of the cause, please see the posted policy, which is out on the table out front.
Good evening, President Anderson, Board, Dr. Young, Cabinet. I'm Marty Hofer. I serve as the Secretary of the Pike Township Educational Foundation. Every two weeks, you see on the board agenda hundreds, sometimes thousands. This week it is only seventy dollars, but often it's much more than that donations that come in from the foundation. And we do this to enhance learning for our students through grants to our teachers. And then every spring, we give over seventy thousand dollars in scholarships to graduating seniors. And I always tell people when they ask me what we do as the foundation, I always say, we raise money to give away money. It is that simple, what we do. And our biggest fundraiser is coming up, and we want and need your help as a board and as a cabinet. Our treasures gala is Saturday, March 15th. The food is delicious at Broadmoor. The auction is fun. And this year, we're adding some fun games that even introvert Marty is excited about. So that's all I'm gonna say about that. And so it'll be fun. If Saturday evenings don't work for you, I get it. We do have options for you to be involved. You could buy tickets and give them to your assigned school and let the principal give them to someone who has maybe won the superintendent's above and beyond award or some other criteria that they come up with. You can bid from your couch, which sounds really fun, although this year, getting to wear jeans because denim and diamonds is the theme. So you don't even really have to dress up to come to this event, but you can bid from your couch. And also, we would love a donation from the board. I know historically in the past, Larry Metzler has spearheaded that. So if you guys could come up with some kind of donation that we could auction off, that would be great. But the bottom line, we need your help to raise more money, to give away more money. You can go to our website, pike-ef.org to buy those tickets. They are already starting to post auction items, so if you'd like to start looking at what you might bid on, that is there. So I hope to see you on Saturday, March 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the good of the cause? Welcome, Mr. Turner. Good evening.
Oh, I see you know my name. Thank you, sir.
Yes, so I will, I will be remiss or let you know, due to, you referred to our policy, we will not entertain any HR issues on the platform for the good of the cause. We don't want to go aside of any privacy laws. So if you have anything to say for the good of the cause outside of any HR issues concerning what you have...
The good of the cause, sir?
It's...
What do you consider good of the cause?
I will ask you, we're not gonna comment or take any questions on it. I'll refer you to the policy. You're more than welcome to stay, but we won't entertain any more of the, your HR issue here for the good of the cause.
You mean as far as not speaking about the situation on this retirement thing? Is that what you're referring to?
That's correct. That's an HR issue.
So where do I address that? You said that before, and you came into a meeting that you brought that up.
I'm not going to address anymore about it. We've been through the proper channels. You're welcome to stay. If not...
So you're just gonna shut me down, correct? That sounds like it. But that's, that's your benefit, you know? But this is not the last you're gonna hear from me. You have a good day, sir.
You do, sir. Anyone else for the good of the cause? All right, we'll move to spotlight on Pike. Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see you all. We have had an incredible amount of amazing things happen since last I saw you. Public education is working in Pike. We want to congratulate our Pike High School girls' basketball team for their outstanding performances in my state and their remarkable season. And we're so proud of those young ladies and that really special team. Absolutely. We also want to give a special shout out to the Pike High School pep band who traveled to semi-state to support them. That was really special. Our new Augusta North eighth grade girls' basketball team won Marion County championship for the second consecutive year and improved to an eighteen and oh record on their season. Twenty-two sixth grade students from New Augusta North Public Academy, Lincoln Middle School, and Guyan Middle School recently competed in the annual MSD of Pike Township District Science Fair at Pike High School. Each project went through three rounds of judging, after which awards were given to the top three projects. Project topics ranged from food safety to water purity to the effects of dye on certain fabrics. All of the scientists received participation ribbons and certificates, as well as a bag of swag donated by representatives from Lilly and Meyer Najim Construction. We want to celebrate our Pike High School Red Devil Dance Team for being the triple A South Region Hip-Hop Champions and wish them luck when they compete at state this Sunday. It will be held at the state fairgrounds Coliseum. The competition begins at eight AM on Sunday, but our red, our lady dancers are expected to perform at ten fifty-five AM. Our Pike High School Boys Swim Team are the IHSAA Swim and Dive Sectional Thirteen Team Runner-Up. We had nine of our swimmers qualify to compete in the state finals. A diver advanced to regionals and two new records at sectionals. Additionally, Coach Charles Grace was named the sectional thirteen co-coach of the year. An honor he also received with, for his work with our girls' swim team earlier this season. This weekend, Pike Theater will proudly present Marvel Spotlight on Friday at seven PM and Sunday at two PM in our Pike Performing Arts Center. Next week, we encourage the community to join us on Tuesday, March 4th for our District Learning and AI Technology Fair. It will take place at Pike High School from six to seven thirty PM. Audrey Cope, Nicole Faulkner, and several of our AI ambassadors from our schools have worked really hard and to create events that will be informative and engaging, and especially for parents who are looking for ways to use AI to help their children thrive academically. Last but never least, we want to thank the individual and organizations listed on this evening's agenda for their generous donation. The Pike Township Education Foundation donated Manipulative Star Early Learning Center. Books-A-Million donated two thousand dollars, and Dr. Bishop donated ten tickets to this week's semi-state game. So we're extremely grateful.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have reports to the board, student-teacher recognition. Mr. Elmore.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, we are proud to introduce the 2024-25 MSD of Pike Township Student-Teacher Cohort. With the support of our Board of Education and Dr. Young, we have the honor of recognizing these future educators who are dedicated to making a difference in the lives of our scholars. Their passion for teaching and commitment to shaping young minds deserves to be celebrated. As a district, we want to express our gratitude for all of their hard work. At this time, we invite groups to come forward and take pictures with the board president. And we'll start with our elementary group.
Andrew, Andrew, you might go to my place. You can go to my place. The vice president, you can go to my place. Cause he got many females up there.
Next, we'll take pictures with one of our two secondary groups. And finally, we'll take pictures with our second secondary group.
Next, for reports to the board, alumni excellence. Dr. Young.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. During this evening's alumni excellence, I am thrilled and honored to recognize Ms. Shayla Wallace, who was actually here tonight. So at this time, we'd like to start with a brief video.
Hi, my name is Shayla Wallace. I graduated from Pike in 2011. I went to Ivy Tech for general studies. Once I completed Ivy Tech, I then moved on and went to Enigma Solutions, where I would help people receive benefits from their health insurance. And once I completed that journey, I then moved on to trucking. After trucking, I then made it to Washington Township as an adult basic education instructional assistant. I helped inmates receive their high school diploma. So the everyday life here at the jail is getting locators in for students, pre-test, see if they're ready to actually take their high set, making sure that they're getting the right information that they're needing to study for their high set, if they're actually ready to. Maybe showing a few videos, if they're maybe needing help on maybe one-on-ones, just to get them ready for their high set. The biggest satisfaction is seeing the inmates faces when they hear that they have graduated. That small bit of hope that they have sitting here all day, just knowing that they're able to say, hey, I did it. That's what they've done. So some people have tears, some people are happy, some people are just ecstatic. So just seeing that on their faces when I'm able to give them that news, that's what brings my day. Dr. Bishop was probably my biggest support system going through high school. Most days, she'd come out into the hallways and come find me, and we'd sit there and take a walk or sit down and talk. And she'll, she was just kind of my outlet. When we moved over to the high school together, I'd go find her and some days have lunch with her, and she'd be like, Shayla, go on to lunch, you know, have some friends. We still see each other from time to time at different events, and we always speak and say hello and give hugs. Pike Township not only helps students at the top of their class, they also help students like me to be able to move forward, to not only get past the finish line, but to also move forward within their careers. Support your kids, support your family, support the school, support the district. They are really truly doing a lot, just by the events that they throw, trying to get us all involved. If you're able to attend, attend them. Just get involved. It's really, really good community. It really is.
And at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Shayla Wallace up to the podium and turn it over to the board with any questions or comments. I'll stay up here with you.
Hi, I'm Shayla. I didn't realize I was gonna be speaking. I just wanna say thank you for choosing me as your Pike alumnus. I appreciate it. My kids are still in the Pike district, so we are a big community.
This is what we love and do, is give the board an opportunity if they want to make any comments or maybe ask you a question or two.
Any comments or questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have so much respect for you, being an educator, also being an educator in our prison system. I think what you offer is hope.
Thank you.
And I think all of us could use that sometimes.
Thank you.
I want to say congratulations as well. And you made, you made a comment that Pike helps those at the top, but they also helped you get to the finish line and across. And that takes a lot. And for you to take that and use it in the prison system, that says a whole lot about you. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Again, I would be remiss as the third teacher on the board to not speak. And then also kudos for where you are serving. It's not an easy population, but you're there for them and for, you've been equipped for this time, for this purpose. So congratulations.
Thank you.
On a job well done.
I can't think of anything more noble than what you do. I think of bluntly, I have family members that have been incarcerated and thinking about the, the hand up that they need during that time. And so thank you so much for what you do. Thank you for how you represent Pike. Just appreciate everything.
Thank you.
You know, I echo the same sentiments as my fellow board members. I thank you for the impact that you're gonna leave on these people's lives, especially where you're at, where you're doing it. And you're also helping us tell the rest of everyone else that Pike is the gift that you didn't know you needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, for reports to the board, Pike Youth Sports Program, Mr. Jacob.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. Thank you for the opportunity, I believe I have a clicker here, to showcase our Pike Youth Sports Program in the township. We'll start with our youth basketball league, you know, and clinics during winter and summertime. So year-round, our kids are getting that skills that they need, you know, to be able to be those, as we saw, and as we heard, semi-state girls, you know, this is where they come from. You know, the travel program also, you know, comes from our youth sports. You know, so they, they prepare them, you know, for that next level to be able to participate in our middle school sports. Our youth league football, you know, while instilling positive value of sportmanship. I think that is very, very critical, you know, at that age, being able to instill that discipline, that importance of that sportmanship. Pike Junior Red Devils, you know, travel football, again, competitive play for the best fifth, sixth grade football athletes. You know, again, this is to continue to build the program. So when they transition to a high, a middle school and high school, they are prepared with the right fundamentals. And we got, we are involved in the Youth Flag Football League as well, you know, to be able to see these many students, five hundred and fourteen students, you know, participate. Pike Youth Wrestling, I'm really, really excited. As you guys know, it's been a while before IHSA now has approved, you know, girls' wrestling. And to be able to see the young movements that are happening in our township, and we've produced some solid champions when it comes to boys wrestling as well, too. Junior Red Devil Cheerleaders, and you guys have seen them in basketball games, I thought, I thought they are the cutest, you know, things. During the football games, you know, just showcasing their skills and just, I think the parents are more excited than the kids, you know, so. But it's good to see that. Baseball and softball programs, you know, again, over three hundred participants in the program in 2024. It's amazing. Track and field, you know, Mr. Landsgarten, I can't say enough about Landsgarten and the talent that he's produced. You know, I shared, he was involved in our Red Devil Dash, and being able to see a fourth grader that was, that won the race among adults. And I, I think that young man is gonna be a future Olympian. We have the best aquatic center in, in the region. There's no question to ask. You know, for our kids to be able to learn in one of the best facilities, you know, just showcases the, you know, what we're trying to build here. And we, I know Ms. Dorsey spoke earlier regarding, you know, the success that our swimming program is having. Junior Tennis League, you know, being able to have that here. And the young man there is one of our student athletes, being able to get involved to produce the next, you know, varsity athlete. You know, seeing that involvement is really important. Youth volleyball, you know, again, we saw the starting of boys, you know, IHSA volleyball, and we have a match coming up March 19th. But, you know, being able to continue to produce, you know, players that we'll be watching is amazing. Pike Youth Soccer, this time, and again, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young, apologize. I didn't introduce my, my team, you know, when I started presenting. And I have Derek Wilkerson, you know, that is being Pike Youth Coordinator. I believe my assistant is here, Ms. Floyd. And also the president of USAI, Mr. Geis, that has been a big supporter of what we do here in our district. But I just want to touch on that a little bit on USAI, and I would, if it's okay to bring Mr. Geis to say a few words. The team, I love Have a Ball. I think it's such a wonderful program that our PE teachers, you know, are high school soccer coach. So the kids see, this is my coach in high school, you know, being able to still continue to, to perform. And it's, it's been amazing going, taking picture, watching the kids having a blast. You know, so I would like to turn it over for Mr. Geis for a few words.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Coach Jacob. And thank you, Superintendent, for this invitation tonight. It's been a while since we've been here. So we appeared today to introduce ourselves to the new board members. We don't come here asking anything from you. Matter of fact, we already received the superintendent's award. It was the first one non-district employee to get the superintendent's award. So I was gonna bring it today, but I hesitate to say I couldn't find it, but, but anyway. The first award from the superintendent for a non-district person, but anyway. Pike Youth Soccer Club of the District, we've been partners since our founding in 1979 in the parking lot here, before this building was here. And we believe this relationship has just never been better. We actually serve the same families. You have them from seven in the morning to three. We have them from three to eight. And the numbers for what Coach Jacob was talking about is, are we come into the gyms and do our Fitness with a Ball program, led by your Pike High School Red Devils Men's Varsity Soccer Coach, Aaron Smith. So the numbers for that program are just astounding. We've visited each school each year for sixteen years, and we've served over a hundred thousand Pike School children. And the cost to the little club is a quarter million dollars, but it's been free to the district. But of course, we would just say that the value of the gift is priceless. But so anyway, thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you, Mr. Geis. The next highlights that I would like to share is when you look at it, we have seven hundred, seven thousand one hundred and ninety-four students in grades K through eight, and through our youth sports, we're able to provide competitive learning experience as well for four thousand four hundred and eight kids, students in our township, K through eight. That's amazing, being able to, what I, and I share this with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Young, said the key thing is they are learning their skills in one of the best facilities in the state, and it is amazing. And as you can see, all these three individuals were part of this youth program. You know, Lawrence, you know, also competed, Lawrence Mitchell, you know, competed at IHSA, you know, was a state winner, runner-up, and also at the collegiate NCA level. And Ms. Erby, we're familiar with Tokyo Olympic, you know, medalist, and Michael Drell, you know, that is O-line for the Seattle Seahawks. So, this, they get here from, you know, being, enjoying the wonderful, amazing facilities and the programs that we provide in our district. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Any questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Any questions or comments?
Well, I have a comment. Again, I appreciate the opportunities that our children and youth get to participate in sports and their development. What I would like to see, obviously, is continuous communication, and especially with parents. And I would hope that we were and continuously stay open and remain open to any ideas and concerns that parents and community may have. Obviously, all of us as board members, we obviously are embedded in the community, and sometimes parents, when they see us, they think we, this is their opportunity to talk and share. So, I would like to see, as our youth sports continue, that we remain open and keep an open dialogue and positive communication with our community so that we can better improve on our sports.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? First of all, thank you for the outstanding report on our sports program in the township. And especially the amount of young people that we are serving, those are astronomical numbers. Is there anything that you feel you're lacking to maintain the thrust that you are pushing in the district for young athletes, student athletes?
I have been blessed being in this, just getting to this space, you know. We meet monthly with Mr. Wilkerson, you know, just to, again, how do we continue to become better? How do we, you know, and I wrote that down, the communication and dialogue with parents. We'll continue to look at ways to become better, and because at the end, the product is the student that we saw becoming a Red Devil, and we're watching that student on a Friday night and Saturday afternoon sometimes, you know, for semi-states. So, thank you.
So, question that I had is your K through eighth grade. The numbers I saw here, I saw the soccer was twenty participants and tennis was twenty-three, but the other ones were two thousand. So, how do we retain them? How do we keep them in Pike Township and not in Lawrence or Cathedral or Barbour or any of those schools? So, what can we do to help keep those students at Pike?
Great question. Thank you for asking that. Part of what we've done, as you can see, our high school football coaches, you know, Mr. Smith, Terron Smith, our coach is involved. So, making sure a lot of our high school, the end product, the end level, are involved with our students at that very youth level. And we've seen Coach Bavard has done a wonderful job bringing those student athletes, and I shared in one of the PowerPoint, our student athletes actually helping, you know, this is where you want to become, you know. So, that is part of what, as someone that has been an A.D. in, you know, other location, that is what I think really helps and preaching. We have it here. We have what you need here. This is, you know, the gift, you know, of being able to participate in one of the best facilities in the state. It's here. And also, you look at our academic successes, you know, so that matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of the things with Ms., to piggyback off Ms. Tony, I think, I think, I think that's why I said again, conversation with parents because and community, especially fathers, because the feeder system is important. You know, you go to other districts and they got a strong feeder system coming right through their youth sports and youth league. So, that's important, that we build a strong feeder system so that we can get championships coming right out of our youth league. So, I think that's what she was having reference to.
Kind of, I'm going to piggyback a little bit on that. I was, the number that stood out to me because of my background here in Pike, coaching softball, especially at the middle school level, we're seeing the three hundred that are in baseball and softball. I'm glad to see that because most of my years coaching, we would get kids in seventh grade and then eventually in sixth grade, and the first day of practice was, this is a ball, this is a mitt, they're starting at that point, and you're so far behind. And so, I love seeing our kids get the chance to start early. I hope we're continuing to grow that. I hope we're communicating it in the school because I'm probably the only one up here with this dream, but I want to go to Oklahoma and watch one of our girls play in the College World Series sometimes. So, that's what I would love to do.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions or comments? One last comment, Mr. Jacob. I appreciate what you're doing, and I also appreciate your willingness to listen to, what can you do to be better, you know, those attributes of a great leader. So, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That concludes our reports to the board. We'll move on to our action items. Action Item A, Minutes of the Board of Education Regular Meeting, February thirteenth. So, move, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll go on. Any questions or comments? We'll go on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have Action Item C, Human Resource Reports. Mr. Elmore, due to the confidentiality, or actually, we've removed B over. Due to the confidentiality of the human resource report, we won't entertain any questions or comments. Mr. Elmore.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the human resources report as presented.
I move we accept the report as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Elmore. Next, we have Action Item D, Request to Accept Bid Middle School Corridor Refresh Project. Mr. Gruber.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I am seeking approval of Action Item D as presented.
We have a first and a second.
I move we accept Item D as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? No questions or comments. We will go on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Next, we have, I'd like to combine Action Items E, F, and G, Claims and Allowances, Contracts, Donations, and Crowdfunding. Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I present Items E, F, and G. They are Claims and Allowances, Contracts, and Donations. I recommend your approval as presented.
I make a recommendation that we approve Action Items E, F, and G as presented.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments for Action Items E, F, and G? No questions or comments. We'll move on to vote. All in favor for Action Items E, F, and G, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Lastly, we're down to board member items. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate this great run of girls' basketball this year, and congratulate the staff that produced such a great team this year. And I'm excited to see the sports programs that are in our district. I'm excited about that. I'm happy to see some of those areas of sports be rejuvenated because some of them were very low, and now they're coming back up, and that's a testament to your ability to work in that area. And I'm just excited to see, anytime we can keep young people busy in the community, we can keep them out of trouble. And so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Wilson.
It's just a privilege to be here and to see Ms. Wallace. Again, I've seen her in the hallways. Every time we have a new outstanding student, I can relate with them. And as I look and I see Lena Erby on the standout, you know, I take pride in knowing that when she was in middle school, they asked me, why do you talk her into being on the basketball team? Because she's a track star, and I said, because when they think they have a fast break, Lena's going to be already down there with her hands up, and she's going to stop them. So, with that being said, I think that we have come a long way. Our girls are now in wrestling, which I take, I think that's a great step in the direction that we want to take our team, which will hopefully bring others into the Pike community. I take pride in knowing that I was there to scream and yell when the girls won sectional, when they won regionals, when we should have won semi-state. But, you know, I take my hat off to the coach. I think that he did an excellent job with what he had. As a coach who knows how parents want you to put their kid in, or who wants their child to do this, or the parents are yelling that, this is yelling it, but he stood firm, and the girls stood behind him, and he stood behind them. So, they brought pride to us. They brought pride to us, and I thank them, and I thank, you know, the fact that we are here to be able to experience it, and we got free T-shirts, and we like that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
All right. So, obviously, like everybody said, it was a great run by our Pike ladies. I hated it but loved it. I had to miss the semi-state games because I was on a date with my very favorite Pike alumni, my daughter. We were at a concert up in Michigan, and I was checking the phone nonstop to see how we were doing. And when we were down ten points, it didn't look good, but man, to come back and, you know, almost pull it out, that was amazing. Congratulations, good luck to, or congratulations, I'm sorry, to the Napa ladies, just of being able to do that. I think sometimes I love, we celebrate our high school students, and it's appropriate, but we don't want us to forget the middle school kids that are out there working hard every day also. And so, congratulations to them. Good luck to the lady dancers and the swimming and diving. Just we've got so many great things going on around here. You could just make an endless list. It was really busy this last couple of weeks. Last Monday and Tuesday, got to spend two days down at the State House, which probably makes the total number of days I've been to the State House, three in my life. But we had the ICPE Day of Action Day down there on Monday, and then the ISBA had their State House Day on Tuesday. And just, I've got to give one little update. Fortunately, we've seen some of the most damaging bills get killed at this point, but there are still not great things out there specifically, just so everybody is aware, because, you know, not everybody follows this stuff. Currently, the state budget would give traditional public education a one point three percent increase in their budget for the next coming year. Inflation is at two point five percent. So, that is a decrease in our budget when you look at it. Not to mention that a hundred and sixty million dollars of that will be a line item that used to be a separate line item for curricular materials that will be moved into the budget. So, that lessens it even more. So, we have the complexity index. I don't have the numbers on how much, but it is being reduced. We know that hurts our students. That hurts our families. The good news is special ed funding is going up, ELL budget is going up, but there's a lot of not great there. So, if you care about traditional public education, contact your state representatives. They do listen. I have personal, from outside of doing this, contact that we've made with some of them, and they do listen. It does matter when you contact. So, please don't sit quietly. Don't be a Facebook warrior. Please email your representatives. It does matter. The last one on that is SB two eighty-seven passed, SB, sorry, two eighty-seven is the one to make all of us declare a party. We don't need party politics in school, and it passed by, out of the Senate, I'm sorry, by six votes, but it really only passed by one vote because it passed twenty-six to twenty, and if it had only gotten twenty-five votes, it wouldn't have gotten out. So, it is still close. It moves to the House now. Again, please email. Please call. It does matter. We don't need that stuff in school boards. I've talked probably long enough, but I do, I want to thank Mr. Enman for running the meeting the other night about middle school grading. It was a very well-run meeting. It was very educational for me. Looking forward to the next one. I appreciate the thought and the concerns being put into there. I really appreciate Dr. Gatewood's comments at the end. I told her, had to thank her for her comments there. Great meeting the student teachers, and I just thank you to everyone that donated to Pike and helping make us continue to be Pike Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Dr. Webster.
I have a couple of items. First of all, thank and appreciate the board for your prayers, and Dr. Young for your prayers on behalf of my mom. Her surgery went well. Now she is recouping, and so, we are praying for speedy recovery. Dr. Moore called first thing on Tuesday morning to pray for her, and, you know, it hits home. She turned ninety-four on Monday and then having surgery on Tuesday. So, we thank you all, board, for your concern, your expressions. I do want to say that I attended a great meeting last Thursday, Thursday before last. Dr. Moore's church on leadership and the current affairs in our community. Much information I knew, but some I did not know, and we were educated, especially on the Medicare and Medicaid, and that's a big one. And so, as educators, as much as we can educate our community on a lot of things that I think is incumbent upon this board to do so, certainly with what is coming down the pipe. We had a governor that graduated from here. He's an alumni here, and a lot of us knew him, and there were, you know, we would give him a good grade on governing over the last couple of terms, but this governor, we don't know, and so, the jury's still out on him. So, we are appreciative for all the information, Dr. Moore, that you bring from your pulpit to help us and to educate our parents, and so, thank you again, board, for your prayers and your concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Webster. Mrs. Barnes.
As your board member, I was happy to visit College Park Elementary School for the African-American Read On organized by Dr. Bowling Mullen. It was an incredible event, and her powers of organization and patience were certainly shine. It was just a shining moment. Our young scholars had many questions about my writing process. So, if any of you students are watching, remember, write, put it away, rewrite. That is the process. It never comes out right the first time. Also, on Tuesday, I worked with Ms. Kelly and also with Dr. Bishop and Dr. Reed from Leola on our board policies, just to make sure that we remain in alignment with federal and state laws. And lastly, I always like to say thank you to our donors. It seems like a little bit, but it's really a lot. The seventy dollars that the Pike Township Education Foundation donated, those are manipulatives, and for those of you who aren't educators, those are things for students to touch, to teach them. They learn by touching, and some of us are just like that. And so, to give them those tools to enable them to learn is important, even if it's only seventy dollars. It's worth a whole lot more.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Ms. Kelly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It has been a busy few weeks in Pike. We are Pike proud of all of our scholar athletes, all of those that are representing us, whether they're on the stage, the field, in the classroom. Very proud of our Pike students and teachers and staff because it takes everybody working together to make all of those things work. The student teachers that have been with us this time, we are grateful for them being with us and the impact that they've had on our students, and we hope we were able to allow them to add some things to their arsenal and toolkit as they're going into their first assignments. We're thankful for our donors as always, and again, as always. And again, can't emphasize enough, the Education Foundation cannot do what they do without us supporting them. So, March fifteenth, we want to be present, ready to donate on those items from the silent auction and support our district.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely agree with everything that has been shared. I, too, want to say thank you and congratulate and wish good luck our student teachers here in Pike Township. We appreciate their support and look forward to see what they do in this field moving forward. I was also a guest teacher at College Park, enjoyed my time as well, and answered some great questions from the scholars there at College Park. Thanks, and congratulations to Ms. Wallace and all of her success. And we just appreciate you being a great example of what a Pike alumnus is all about. I also want to say thank you to the organizations that come alongside Pike Township in providing those youth sports opportunities. You know, some of those, a handful of those, we lead ourselves. But for the other ones, you know, those are programs that we have vetted and feel very comfortable with partnering to make sure that our kids get a variety of different sporting opportunities. And then, last but not least, which has already been shared, but I'll reiterate, you know, let's support Pike Township Educational Foundation. They support our children through the support that we give them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. In closing, again, I'm very proud of our girls' basketball team and the coaching staff. That was a roller coaster ride, so I'm happy for them. I can't wait to see what they bring next year. And also, with our youth programs, our sports youth programs, I like to see that grow. I'm happy with your presentation, Mr. Jacob. It's programs like that that produces the teams and the athletes that we have. So, I support you fully on that. And also, as always, the work that everyone puts in behind the scenes that don't always get recognized, but we recognize you and we see the work that you do. With that being said, I get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, move, Mr. President.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.